...years, and there's nobody here that's probably better capable of making some comments than Dr. Lawson. You've been empowered.
That you go to one of history's.
Yeah, I really do. Let me just offer a quick comment or two regarding my friend. As I came to Tallahassee two and a half decades ago, there were three old guys in this building. And I really thought that if nothing else, before they padded off to retirement somewhere, I could steal some ideas from those three old guys and they could keep me out of trouble. And as I was willing to listen, they did that. As I was inclined not to listen, I paid the price for that. But those three old guys, Dean and Wayland and Mike, truly established for us... Yeah, you see, Wayland has the money to just walk. Established for us a culture in this community, and a culture that was all about respect and character and trust, and enjoying each other and the work that we did. Mike never came to work without a set of dreams. And that set of dreams was about first and foremost, his faith, and then a family that he held dear. Even if he didn't agree with what Michael was doing at that time, even if he was disappointed with Tim's decision on something, and even if he was considering where Leanne was going and what Leanne was going to do, his first and foremost goal in his regard was to provide for a family that he knew was going to be in place. And as we think about that legacy here tonight, and his family is with him, we see that he's done a remarkable job in that work. So, Michael, Leanne, Tim, congratulations. You have exceeded every expectation that your daddy ever had of you. And you are truly establishing for him a tremendous legacy for the Tallahassee family. As I said, Mike was all about dreams, and his dreams went a lot of places. So there were times that Mike told us, and Wayland can attest to the truthfulness of everything that I say. Mike always had an incremental step detail? Oh, okay. Always had an incremental set of steps that he was looking at for retirement. So retirement was always going to be this year, and then this year, and then this year, and then this year. But as he talked about that retirement and what he was going to do, the dreams, the work, the way he was going to add value, was always going to include working at a Christian school. So if there's been one recurring theme that I knew about Mike for the last two and a half decades, it was the fact that someday, couldn't have had it for my kids, but my grandkids are going to have an opportunity, and folks in my community are going to have an opportunity, that I think is terribly important. Don't just hear that. Mike's a public school guy. Mike's mother was a public school teacher. Mike's father was a train guy. So Mike is a, was raised in public schools, but he truly sees the value of faith. So while other dreams may have come and gone, the dream, the aspiration, the goal of putting that shovel in the ground and starting a school became a reality. Mike is one of the few people that I know that has retired from public school work to go be a superintendent. Most of us don't know that. But when Church of Christian Academy couldn't have a better superintendent, they couldn't have someone who is more focused on the children, on the community, and on the vision of establishing something great for the community of believers in Franklin County, Tennessee. There are few folks that I think more highly of than Mike Rugg. Those few folks will know how to read math. The other thing I know to be true is that with Mike, you didn't ever have to conduct some investigation to see what went wrong. Because within three days of whatever had happened, Mike was quick to sit in a room... Mike was quick to sit in a room with Wayland and Dean and myself, and he dropped his head, and he'd tell us the story, and our joke was, "Mike, for a Church of Christ kid..." He'd do more confessionals than anybody. He confessed better than Nini Cat, because I know. But Mike would always confess about, "I did this, I did this, I should have done this, I should have thought about that." But I know that in all of those occurrences, every one of them, when I default to the reason, it was all about being in favor of and in support of people. Mike loved this community like no other, and he spent 25 years, excuse me, 35 years, not being able to admit. You know, he couldn't go back to Franklin County, this is a really great place. Mike welcomed him out of the closet. And more than that, thank you for all the investments you've made. Thank you for making this school district what it has become, and thank you for being a great friend. Appreciate it. Anybody here want to comment or two? Here's a chance, Mike. Not often do you get to preach after your funeral.
Yeah. Well, he's gonna make it hard to talk. But I have a challenge with that invoice sometime.
You did it one time.
Yeah, I know that time. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It's, as you said, I have no... I was born in Franklin County, raised in Franklin County, went to Franklin County Schools, and Tallahassee was my end. And yet, Tallahassee City Schools, 35 years ago, this month, became sort of my salvation because it got me off the road. I was, I was traveling to Tuskegee, Alabama every Sunday night after we put the kids to bed, and working down there and coming home on Fridays. And I was in a hospital, I was in health care at the time. And I did that for six months when this, this opportunity became available. And Dr. Embry gave me that opportunity to, to come here. And I probably have to admit that I accepted a Tallahassee City Schools check for a long time before it came full circle to be a fifth time. This is a really good school system. To be well informed. So, it's been a... Some of it's developed over time for me to, to be able to say that this is me, and this is, this is what I'm proud of here for Tallahassee City Schools, and all the people, and all of the schoolgoers, all the people that have put up with me. But it's, it's been a blessing, in my opinion. And I tell the story, I've told it several times over the years. Wasn't long after I got here that I realized that it was in my best interest, even if I didn't move, that my kids lived still over here. And they were, at the time, they were 12, nine, and seven, maybe thirteen, ten, eight, but anyway. And so, we had a vote. Sandra and the kids voted, and it was four to one to not come over here. And so, that proved to me that I've done a good job of indoctrinating them, and it's the same thing that I've done over here as far as the rivalry. And so, but it has been a blessing, and all of you have been a blessing to me. And I appreciate you so much. And it's been a glorious 35 years. Coming over here tonight, Sandra said, "How old were you when you came?" I was 38 years old when I started here. Younger than any of my children. And it's, and I was the oldest of those four guys, old guys, and the last one to retire. Which doesn't say a whole lot for how smart I was. But thank you all very much for coming, and honoring me and speaking to me tonight, and I appreciate you so much. And it's, it's been a pleasure to be a part of Tallahassee City Schools.
Mayor's been here, and he was disappointed that you weren't here. He, he is, at the same time, there had a reception for the new commander in the base, but he left this proclamation for you. Certificate of recognition, Mike Rugg, on behalf of 18,655 citizens that call Tallahassee home and by the authority vested in me, Mayor of Tallahassee, I now therefore proclaim, Monday, September 23rd, 2019, in celebration of 34 years of dedicated service, Tallahassee City Schools, Mike Rugg. In Tallahassee... Take that back to the mayor of Franklin County. An urge and a seat to all citizens to recognize the same. Congratulations on your retirement. Best wishes, Lane Curley. Did you get it? That could just be a good time to recognize?
You may have heard in the background, we had some music brought tonight because we wanted to do something special. We have artwork up in the room, and we wanted something special for everything going on here. And I'm supposed to say a few words about what is happening going on here. This room, these are eighth grade playing players from East Mill School. And that lady out there with them, that's Lisa Burrow. She's been working with them alongside and giving speeches and reading. This is Sarah Ekin, Isabella English, Emily Melstrom, Olivia Murphy, Anna Ray, and Green. You can even hear beautiful angelic sounds walking through the room. And I know that a lot of people have commented on the mural we've got in this here. And I got way more questions about it than I thought I would. And we actually have a couple of people responsible here tonight. But this is a dock mural. Can you feel under clear with the dock look? Yeah, the dock look. So, and I know that Mr. Harper over here, he could tell us, he could give you a synopsis, right? Full plot. Every year, there is a dock day, right, which is September 15th. And the whole point of the dock look is to try to, you know, recognize and awaken those artistic tendencies that are inside everybody, hopefully before they get squatted. You know, so often it happens, and I have people tell me stories like this all the time. And, you know, "I used to really want to sing, and then I had a fire teacher that told me, 'Oh, you can't sing.'" And I never wanted to sing again. Or, "I really wanted to draw, and I had slim teachers." I wasn't a teacher. "No, you can't do that," and then they don't want to draw anymore. And so, what this look is all about is finding that special something that everyone can do and celebrate. And so, this is third pattern, right? And ladies, if you could help me out. Each, each color, each part of the palette here represents a different school?
The Farfalle palette represents a different school. The red that we start with, broken orange, Reese Lincoln. The yellow is Bell Airs, the gray is Fair. Blue and purple is Marabou.
Let's give these ladies one more real quick. I can do that because I live in the classroom with them every day. Go ahead. And here's Anna Ray, here's Isabella English, Olivia Murphy, Emily Melstrom. And there's Sarah Ekin and Hope. And Lisa's right there. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all. It's not often that you can merge the 34 years of service and the business director and fine arts on the same night. Thanks, everybody. We'll have just a little bit of notation about Mike and the business meeting, but mostly we're going to probably three to go. I'm going to recite the pledge.
Pledge, ladies. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Everyone is here, but Ms. Userson was not able to attend tonight. And the next thing we want to do is approve the agenda as presented. I think everybody's been, we had a fourth item sent in by Ms. Vaughn later under unfinished business. Is there any additions or anything? If you need to comment on the agenda, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Have a motion on Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second to Ms. Lawson. Any further discussion? Not if you're for the agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. Is there anyone here to address the board on the agenda item or a non-agenda item? Somebody emailed me today, "I want to apologize for not, I was interrupting Knoxville back and did not, I felt like the safety of I-40 should have kept my phone down." Plus, they find you for that now. If you'd please come forward or just stand up, give us your name, please.
I'm Alyssa Mitchell. I teach at Tallahassee High School, and I have for almost six years now, a thoroughly dreaming. I just, thank you for letting me speak. And I had to write it down so I'll forget.
Take your time.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the Tallahassee State School Board members. Like I said, I teach science at Tallahassee High School. And on behalf of myself and my family, I would like to thank several employees for their hard work and time spent toward ensuring a safe workplace environment for me to return to tomorrow. Since I have asthma and I have some situations, I have a lot of people doing a lot of work, and I wanted to tell them how much I appreciate. And these wonderful people have worked very hard on my path, and I wanted to let everyone know about how much I appreciate it. First, Mr. Jason Ray. Thank you very much to you and everyone that worked with you. Mr. Tim Jensen. Mr. Tim Jensen and staff, THS principal post, and administration staff. The nurse Lori, which I don't know her name yet.
Welch.
Welch, okay.
Spelled incorrectly with a C, that's bad.
Okay, Ms. Lori Welch. And the THS custodial staff, and all of the THS faculty and staff. And I look, I work for a great school system, wonderful school system, and look forward to working with the THS administration staff and students for years to come. And thank you for the time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Vaughn, would you make sure that, what's the formal way that the minutes are sprinkled with our acknowledgement of the hard work and the service that Mr. Rugg has provided? And we had a reception, well attended, and Dr. Lawson's here to make comments, and his family was all here also, please. And mention that he is now citizen of the day, proclaimed by the mayor. Consent agenda's next item. Is there any item to be pulled off the consent agenda for further discussion? Not entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
Summate.
So moved. Ms. Fogarty, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Lawson, I've got you identified tonight a little bit better. I'll tell others about that inside joke here. We got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Not if you're for the consent agenda as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Unfinished business, building the grounds, there's two main items to talk about. The first, the maintenance committee has met, and we understand that there's two, three schools especially need to be touched on. Bell Air, THS, and East Mill. And we've found a contractor that's willing to work with two men for $62.50 a hour, including all his insurance, liability, workforce comp, all of that. And our idea is to put him to work with, is Mr. Dr. Dillay back there? But he'll supervise him, come up with the rooms he wants to attack first. And I told the contractor that it felt like we would commit to at least 80 hours, that'd be less than $5,000, which I think is a really cheap investment to find out whether a few more people might be able to help get our maintenance situation, especially those three schools up there. That doesn't require a vote. Does anybody have a comment about that or question? If not, we'll go to the landscaping bids. The committee also wants to authorize Mr. Ray to come up with a request for proposal for landscaping at the seven schools. We'll worry about that. That will require a motion and a vote later on. First, we'll see what the landscaping people come back with. They're going to be directed to have small plants that are low maintenance with mulch being stowed, some type of stowed, and we'll go from there. Any comment, question on that? If not, we've got a meeting coming up pretty soon, and we'll continue on. See, it's board policy, section four, instructional services, is that next, Mr. Harper? I believe that... The same? Okay.
This is the final vote for the changes, the cleaning up that we've done for section four. That's basically all that we've already...
Yeah, we're ready for study session two. Any questions or comments there? That does require a vote, I believe it does. Not, Ms. Johnson?
It does.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the changes made to section four, instructional services. Do we have a motion?
Summate.
Motion by Ms. Robinson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any further discussion? Not if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Destination of disciplinary officer. That has always been a name. And we could just say the director of schools, but I'd rather make it more formal and have it by name. And at some point, we'll probably have another one, but we can face that down the road too. I would entertain a motion to name Scott Harrow as the disciplinary officer with school assistant. Motion by Ms. Lawson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? Not if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. New business.
Strategic plan.
Excuse me, thank you. Strategic plan. I know there's probably some more work to be done on that, but this is the only one we've really got a little bit of a timetable on. I think Susan has got, Ms. Fanning has got, we've got October the 15th deadline. We can send that in. If there's something that they want changed, or something we won't change, we can change it later, but we need to meet the deadline. Everybody has, should have a copy sent to them. I'd entertain a motion to accept the strategic plan and get it sent to the state office by October 15th. Is there a motion?
Summate.
Motion by Ms. Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any further discussion on the strategic plan? Not if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Now, we can go to the contract consideration, Mr. Harrow. Mr. Bellerin?
Mr. Chairman, at your request, I've been at with Mr. Harrow at least twice and discussed with him his contract. And I've provided the board members with copies of the draft and the final draft. The contract's very similar to a normal, but as an interim, it's on a month-to-month basis. I've been, so any time that the board decides to select a new director, then, you know, and if it is not Mr. Harrow, then it will be, he'll go back to his former position as principal. Is, he's got a base salary that was agreed upon by him and the chairman, $8,560 per month, and provides for basic benefits as we've always done for other directors. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the chairman to execute the contract for Mr. Harrow. Motion by Ms. Lawson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hill. Any further deliberation? Not if you're for the contract, be executed, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thanks again. Approval of attorneys, Mr. Ray?
Yes, the proposal in front of you is twofold. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware, I was...
I did the same thing, Dr. Lawson.
And there are basically two sections, I believe. What you have there in front of you, the first is a special education council recommending Bennett and DeCamp of Chattanooga. And the second for services to continue to be by Mr. Miller. The details included there for a monthly retainer and additional services necessary.
We'll need two motions when we get ready for that. The special ed, that portion of the retainer, that firm has done that for decades now, and I believe are considered premier firm in the state for that. So let's, let's go ahead and get that. What is the cript? Recommend Bennett and DeCamp of Chattanooga to be the attorney for special education. I'll entertain a motion as such. Motion by Ms. Fogarty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? Not if you're for that motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Give us a brief history of the, we switched to a different option, which we've been referring to as option two.
If you go back actually 20 years, it started off on a, basically an hourly basis. And after probably 10, 12 years, the board decided, asked me for some proposals that would... would include a certain level of work for a static dollar number. And we moved to a partial retainer and to hourly work. So there's things included, things not included. That has just kind of changed over the last, I guess, eight to 10 years. About 18 months ago, I think, I was asked to make a proposal whereby 95% to 99% of all work would come under one static number. That way it could be bludgeoned out. You knew what your dollar amount was, and the only thing that was not included would be litigation. And so, that's the proposal that's in front of you. We had, at that time, Mr. Rogu was still in his position, former position, and we had numbers that we just looked back over the last five to eight years of what normal work had been, and came up with a number.
Listen, this might be a sensitive question, but I'm just gonna ask it for transparency's sake. So litigation is not something that we as a school board are able to ever recoup, by the way, or typically we're not?
No. No, you mean recoup your expenses?
Correct.
No, there would be, it'd be very rare. If you were in a contract action with someone and that contract provided for term spades, maybe within 20 years I've been here, we've never been in that position. So historically, you know, from a historical basis, I would say no, you're most likely never will be in that kind of position.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the proposal from Henry McCord, Ben and Miller.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fogarty, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robinson. Any further discussion? If not, if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, election of officers. You all can make motions and figure out how you want to do this. I'm not gonna run that part. We, at times, we voted, there's been nominations and motions rather made for a block in our office. So I'm not gonna direct that portion of the meeting.
I nominate the block as it is currently to continue. Exact. Download.
That would be...
You as president, Kim as vice.
Ms. Lawson as secretary.
Correct. That's my nomination.
Is there any other?
My one concern is that with the upcoming election cycle, if we are gonna lose any of the current members on board, I mean, I don't know what everybody's thought is, who's up for election, whether they're gonna continue to run or not, and I guess I sort of pointed at you too. But the question is, like, does somebody else, do we switch anything in order to prepare for any imminent change here from now?
There would be a possibility that two might change of the candidates that she had in her motion. I don't know, I'm not ready to decide what I want to, I'm gonna consult plenty of people and make a decision. I feel like Kim's in the same vote, but I don't, I don't know that. But Ms. Lawson would still be here the following year.
But that would be, wouldn't really come into effect until, like, next August, correct?
Correct.
So at that point, then, some kind of decision could be made. Or would have to be made.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Second. All right, there being no other motions, we'll, I'll call the question on the first one. I'll retire the same as we have had in the last year. Any further discussion? Not, if you're for the motion, please raise your hand. Is there any way I can vote for two people and not one?
Not as the motion stands.
Not as the motion stands.
So be it.
You have to vote for yourself.
All right, appointments, we've had several emails where a question was asked, can we be pleased with the change that we've been having and increased committee work? And I must admit, the committee work has been excellent, the best committee work I believe we've ever had, but we'll stay the same.
Well, I'm actually spoken with Ms. Usleton about switching with her to be on the superintendent, the superintendent relations.
Board superintendent.
To continue with working with that, I guess with the other two members for the job plan.
You mean there was only two on there?
No, there's three. Kim said that she would...
You're talking about the board record.
I'm not speaking, I'm just saying the conversation I had, she was agreeable to switch with me for that.
I would have wanted Kim to get to stay on it though, because she's been on it for so long, but who are the other, who's on that one?
Ms. Johnson and Ms. Robinson.
Okay.
Actually, she hasn't been on it that long because...
On that one? She did it last year with, I mean, I was on it with her like a year, two years ago in a row.
I was confused, I thought it was Steve.
It's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Would she then go to a different one?
Well, she's on the Committee of the Pat, what is that?
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee. She's on...
She's on Policy to Go.
And, but is there anything else? And she was on that one, so that was three, so...
Let me talk to her, if it's all right. I don't want to promise anything right away, I hope that doesn't cloud anything. We've got a great system right now, I want to be sure we don't, and you define it, I'm not insinuating that. School assignments, Bel Air, Ms. Lawson, East Lincoln, me, Jack Farah, Ms. Fogarty, Robert Lee, Ms. Johnson, East Mill, Mr. Hill, West Mill, Ms. Robinson, High School,
And I think it would be important to mention that...
I'm sorry?
I would just, it would be maybe important to mention that Director Harrow asked us to make sure to visit our schools, so, and I think, you know...
And I hope, I've visited one that's been visited at the same time by another member, which is a good thing to have. I've been to all, I've been to every school but one, and I'll get it this week, and I feel safe in all schools I've been visited. And believe you me, the visits have been appreciated. Let's get us to the superintendent's report. And I have a note there recognizing fine arts work, and so we've already done that.
Our fine arts, Mr. Hensley did forget to point out, I think our band rocked it pretty well this weekend at competition.
Oh, they did.
Band in Color Guard did very well. And if I'm not mistaken, this may be in our, right down the street here, and will be displayed there.
I believe it's gonna be at South Jackson.
Okay, all right, South Jackson here. So, a lot of good stuff, great stuff going on at our schools. Football team rolled on last weekend against Spring Hill. We play Lincoln County at home this week, it's homecoming. Our middle schoolers play tomorrow night, and that's their eighth grade night over at the Arnold football field. Jack T. Farah had a dance last Friday night, and that's real big for those kids. And as far as personnel change, those are in here, the only one not listed there is Mr. Travis Moore. He's been appointed as interim principal at East Lincoln.
I was with him for the attendance Friday morning.
He has been baptized.
And he was just as, just as good at the attendance as his predecessor.
And our city board liaison is Rupa Shukla, I believe that's Rupa Blackwiss, VSO, and I would assume she's in the city meeting with our new base commander. But get out of our schools, a lot of great things going on, and they'd love to see you all.
I've been to a couple of middle school football games this time, and I can't get over the middle school band.
I know.
It's huge. I mean, the numbers, and they sound, so I'm thinking, they haven't even had them for very long, and they already sound so good.
Every year I hear them, it's amazing.
I just...
As do they are. It speaks to how that program does start that growth, and they have worked so hard to keep it fluid, and that's why they go to a competition right now.
Did very well. The high school student, Sunday school class, it's got, it's in the band, and he said, "I think this weekend's competition, there was 20 schools there, and they performed by enrollment of the band, not the students."
Right.
And so we performed 19th, and there was a lot of bands, with the total school population much, much larger than our high school, but performed four hours. They are, all the fine arts are being amended in notation of the mural that we have, Flutus here tonight. Mr. Atticus is gonna be doing more things like that during, in conjunction with the board bids. I want to say we had, we've had some tough times, but I cannot be happier with our selection of our interim director. We named him on Monday morning, excuse me, Monday at about 6:35, in what, eight hours, about 2:00 in the morning, he gets a call from somebody in the police department where he's got some trouble. And he didn't bat an eye. And I, he is, he has hit the ground running with a smile on his face, and I want him to know that he's appreciated by this board.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very humbled. I mean, I grew up here, I went to school in our schools. I was blessed enough to be able to teach and coach here and serve as administrator, but I am very humbled, I am very grateful, and I'm very excited. There are a lot of great people in our classrooms doing a lot of great things, with a lot of great, and I love the G-word, a lot of great, because they are, a lot of great folks administering that, and even more so, we've got a lot of great kids out there. And it's exciting. It's really rewarding to be able to get out and see all the magic that goes on in our classrooms, but I feel blessed. Thank you all for the opportunity.
We all are. Any other comment? Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by Ms. Fogarty, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? If not, if you're for adjournment, please raise your hand. Thanks, thank you all.